To the Monday, August 24th, 21st, 2017, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a cellphone or electronic device that asks that you place it on silent, call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Domingo, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Here. Are there any councilmember comments this evening? Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. Five things. The first is Albion College welcomes 567 new first-year students and transfer students to Albion's campus. This is a big increase over the last couple of years, so we're very excited about that. It's been a distinct effort on the part of the college for the college to look, in terms of its diversity, like the community in which it resides. So I'm happy to report that forty percent of our incoming first-year students are considered students of diversity. Kena Williams is our Director of Intercultural Affairs, and she's very excited about having lots and lots of folks to mentor and to work with so that they can be, like all students, successful at Albion College. I have an update regarding the hotel project. Met with Veridia, the management company that's handling the management of the courtyard by Marriott. They tell us that they are ahead of schedule, and they expect to be open by the beginning of the second semester in January. Ahead of schedule. They look to be posting jobs sometime in late October or November, doing training in December before they open in January. Also like to say that we have nine Build Albion Fellows at Albion College, first-year Albion Fellows, bringing our total to twenty-three, and we're very excited about having them onboard. Recall that Build Albion Fellows are residents, high school graduates from the city of Albion who are high need and are committed to community service in exchange for free tuition room and board, and they develop skills in leadership and volunteerism and community service. Fourth, Cass Street going east from downtown and west has been sort of torn up. So they're doing the transition spaces between the bricks and the main asphalt streets on Cass Street. If you go further east toward east of the railroad tracks, you'll see that the gutters and storm drains have been pulled up. College is working on partnering with the city to resurface that part of the road and to rebuild sidewalks and streetlights for that particular part of the city. So students and faculty and staff who are there or after dark can move toward the downtown to participate in activities at Luddington Center or the Bone Theater, what have you. And finally, not wanting to eclipse the rest of my comments, I'd like to say that about a thousand people or so came on campus this afternoon to watch the partial eclipse. It was a wonderful mix of folks from all over the city and all over the state, as well as college students and faculty and staff. It was just a wonderful opportunity for conversation. I saw small children running around, saw teenagers and college students and young and old alike just enjoying the day. The weather was wonderful, and the eclipse was really fun to see. So hope some of you got a chance to see that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Reed?
Just to say to what Mr. French said, over the summer when they had the free movies downtown, the Build Albion Fellows were there and they did an excellent job. And I thank forty of the five hundred and fifty that came to Albion College because they came out yesterday and worked at Holland Park and did a fantastic job with Mrs. Shuler.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
I'd like to happily announce that the Albion Housing Commission has voted to be part of the HUD Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant. This grant allows for an opportunity for us to have increased surveillance by camera, possibly getting bus shelters for the students in the winter, and also playground. The grant also included the complete demolition of the housing project units and replacing them with new units. At this time, we think it's best not to be involved in that endeavor because it opens it up to entrepreneurship and private investment, and we think that that could possibly displace some of the residents, but it's still a great opportunity. Cheryl, myself, and another city employee, we attended the meeting and we were very cheerful about it. Also, this weekend, as President of the Northwestern Neighborhood Watch, we're having our neighborhood cleanup. It's similar to the city's cleanup. We're hoping to help senior citizens come out to Prowell School, 1500 block of Cooper Street, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. this Saturday. Food will be served. We'll have fourteen students from, I think it's still called Star Commonwealth, but they're from Star. We'll have a forty-yard dumpster. It will be emblazoned with the Neighborhood Watch sign. We want to thank Family Fair, Culligan, Tractor Supply. They were all so generous to us, and we just appreciate it. And we're just happy that we can get people to come out and support our neighborhood. Myself and some others will be driving trucks. We'll have two Star students with us. We'll be coming by homes, picking up the discarded items that people might need to have picked up. So please help us fill up the dumpster. Oh, I'm sorry. This Saturday, August 26th, the dumpster will be out Thursday and Friday and all the way up to Monday. So if you're not there Saturday, feel free to come Monday and Sunday. Just dump your stuff in there on your own if you want to. Thank you.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. I myself, and I think that I can safely speak for the majority of the council, when I say thank you to Dr. Mitchell, Jim Linderson, and other city staff that has taken the time and in a timely manner replaced our street city signs. I noticed some of them, and they look really nice, and I appreciate the work and the timeliness in getting that done. So thank you, Jim, Cheryl, city staff workers. And also, I wanted us to, I received an email earlier from, I guess it's the church that Mary Slater attends, St. Lutheran. They asked us to keep her in our prayers. She is having surgery on Friday for cancer. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments? Okay. I want to just acknowledge, yesterday I attended the basketball tournament at Holland Park that was well-attended and organized, so I wanted to acknowledge that. And then also want to acknowledge the swinging at the Shell yesterday evening. I guess that was, I guess, a historic crowd for the performance of War and Treaty, the War and Treaty. And then, let's see, what else? And then also I had a chance on Saturday to go downtown and to kind of walk, survey the street, went into the new bookstore there. And so I think that things are moving in a positive direction, and we look forward to beginning of the year when a number of these new venues, the hotel, and some of the businesses are open. So with that, we will move forward to presentations. Item A, Commendation for Public Safety Officers Dan Riley and Kyle Wilson. Chief Kip?
I think most everybody here already knows that on August 4th, 2017, PSO Riley and PSO Wilson responded to a medical call and assisted in the delivery of a baby girl prior to the arrival of any other medical assistance. Officer Riley was the actual delivery person, but I think Officer Wilson was helping. So we have a Meritorious Service Award that's given to the officers for their work, and also a stork pin that they get to wear. And the stork pins were generously donated by Greg Huzar, who's a former Detroit Police Officer, and in his time with the Detroit Police Department, he delivered four babies. So congratulations, both of you.
Stork, not historic. Stork.
All right, we took to see that on your badge.
Oh, man, that's great.
Excellent.
Definitely for that, Catherine. Those are cool.
Thank you. The, okay. We'll move on to item B, Certificate of Appreciation, Corbett Smith, his retirement. Oh, okay.
City of Albion Certificate of Appreciation Award, Corbett Smith.
Excuse me, thank you. City of Albion Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Corbett Smith in recognition of exemplifying outstanding public service and the highest standards of professionalism as a multi-service mechanic for the Albion Department of Public Services for sixteen years. Corbett was innovative and instrumental in saving money for repairs and purchases for the city during his many years of service. Corbett is considered a jack-of-all-trades and will be missed. We express our appreciation and best wishes on your retirement.
Public comments. Persons suggesting the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and for no more than three minutes, and we ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent calendar. Item A, approval of regular session minutes, August 7th, 2017. Item B, approval of leisure hour DJ for Festival of the Forks.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items for individual discussion. Item A, approve updated 2017 fee schedule.
So moved.
Motion, does it move? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. City manager?
Mayor and council, this reflects two proposed changes to the 2017 fee schedule. The first one being for the mayor officiating weddings, and that rate would be fifty dollars. And the other is the assessor had recommended adding one for lot-line adjustment. She had recommended thirty dollars. Subsequently, staff had recommended that it be in line with the other property line divisions adjustments, and that it be the fifty-five dollars.
Is there any discussion on those two? Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. First question regarding the mayor officiating weddings. What was the price prior? Or is this a new fee?
In the course of conducting a marriage a couple weeks ago, in prepping for that, I found out that you're supposed to, I guess the city's supposed to have that on the books, and I don't think we did. I think historically, we've just charged fifty dollars, so this is just really just...
Just codifying standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
I would say you're probably worth more than fifty dollars, Mayor.
Well, goes to the city. It's not new.
I still would say that you're probably worth more than fifty dollars.
Is that the only?
No, I, sorry, I had a question about, just understanding, lot-line adjustment is not doing a full state survey for your property, but like you want to make an adjustment to a property line? Is that what we're talking about? Do you mean lot-line adjustment?
I would ask John Tracy to come forward to give you an official answer on that one.
Yes, I did get a haircut. John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. Primarily, there has been land splits and combinations where a part of one parcel may be split off and combined with another. The city assessor suggested the line adjustment because in some cases, you're only looking at a foot or two, or maybe three feet off of one parcel. Someone selling it to the neighbor for, maybe because they want to put up whatever, a garage, and they need the additional few feet to meet the zoning or things of that nature. So that's where that came about.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So are we being asked to approve the thirty dollars for the lot-line adjustment or the fifty-five?
I guess the recommendation from staff would be to be consistent for this type of work, and he posts rates fifty-five.
So cross out the thirty. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Or any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed with a vote. Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item B, request approval, first reading ordinance 2017-6 to amend ordinance 22-182 sidewalk cafes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. City manager?
Mayor and council, if you recall, we had the request at your last meeting for the pop-up restaurant, which by the way was a tremendous success. And we discovered that our current ordinances do not allow for outdoor seating in cafes outside of the Superior Street. So what this ordinance would do would be to amend the ordinance to allow for it within the B2 district, which is downtown.
Are there any questions or discussion from council regarding that? The one question I have, so this will all just be a permitted situation?
One question, Mayor.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. So this would be for all the side streets as well?
Yes, any street within the...
Downtown district?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we will proceed with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item D, discussion of study session date for charter revision. Oh, I did? I did, I crossed that one. You're right.
Local zoning land use?
Yes. Request approval for draft of future land use and zoning plan and release for public comment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. City manager?
Mayor and council, this is in response to the redevelopment-ready community process, and one of those component pieces is the zoning plan for all of our community. So this would, the original document was drafted and recommended by the Planning Commission. So the steps are that it comes to council for your consideration. This is just the first reading essentially. So it goes out for public comment, I believe, for ninety-two days. Those comments come back. You have a public hearing. At that point, you can incorporate any recommended changes that will go back to the Planning Commission for their final approval. So this begins the process for public comment.
And if I remember from Planning Commission, this is the document, basically we're going from, I mean, I guess John could speak to this, but reducing the number of zoning classifications.
Current?
Relative to residential.
Okay.
They would be condensed.
Do you have any? Okay. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item D, discussion of study session date for charter revision. I asked if this be on the agenda of the last, at the last meeting, between, I guess the last meeting and now, was able to speak with the MML General Counsel who did our training in January, and just asked for kind of recommendations about, you know, attorneys or consultants who specialize in that. And he pointed us in the direction, like, gave us like four or five names. The one gentleman that he, I guess particularly identified as worth talking to, actually just completed, or just completed working on, I guess, Flint's Charter Revision. And so the manager reached out to him, and he gave us two dates, the 28th and the 25th. Twenty-fifth and 28th.
Of what?
Of September. So I think it's like a Thursday and a... Okay. So Thursday and Monday. And just wanted to know from council, which date would you all, would the council prefer? Councilmember French and then Councilmember Brown?
I have a preliminary question. Does the council feel that resources toward this endeavor are worth spending? This consultant will not be free. So I would ask that we determine whether the majority of the council feel that we should be spending money in this fashion before we embark on this activity.
I think, oh, Councilmember Brown?
Well, I was gonna ask, do we have a rough estimate of the cost?
He gave us a quote in 2015, and I think it was like thirty thousand. I don't know if it has changed between now and then. I think the point of the study session was just to kind of get a sense of, I guess from his, he does this exclusively, so like what the scope of it is, what would be required of the city, what the process, so it, you know, it's, you know. Any questions that we did have, we could ask at the study session. That's the whole point of the study session, is to familiarize us with that process. Councilmember Brown?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say, of the two dates that you mentioned, the 25th would work best for me.
So the 25th is the Monday, the 28th is the Thursday. Is there, Councilmember French?
My question was not answered. So I honestly think that we, by agreeing to a study session, we are agreeing that we're gonna pay somebody money, and if we don't have agreement, he's gonna, he's gonna give us this first session for free.
Well, I think this is a...
He's gonna give us this session for free.
I think it's similar to any other time when we have, when we had the water tower system. We have an initial meeting to kind of explore costs, see what, yeah.
But that was, with all due respect, sir, the water tower issue is something that was brought to us by our city manager as necessary to be in compliance with state law. This, until I have a consensus from the council that this is money worth spending, is an entirely different matter. So I would just ask that before we embark on hiring a consultant to give us information about whether we should revise our charter or not, that we should take a vote of the council to see if it's worth spending the money. We've already overspent the council's allotment because we brought in an attorney to discuss the Albion trust, so...
Which, by the way, was worth it because we discovered that the way we were writing the contract was not in compliance with charter.
Irrelevant to my comment is that we don't have an awful lot of money to spend. So unless the council is in agreement that we spend money this way, see this as a waste of time.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I see no objection to a work session. I think it's worth the money. We've just spent like fifty thousand dollars on a parking lot, so I don't see a problem or any objection with paying the cost to have a consultant come in and explore whether a charter revision is something the council wants to proceed with.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Are there things in the charter that's old and we need to take out?
So my thought, since I've been on council for six years, has been that the last time the charter was revised was 1960, and Albion was a very different place. And so I think that a lot of the departments and I guess obligations to the city are not there, so that can be cleaned up. And I know that there are, in the last couple of years, we've started down that road in terms of, for example, reorganizing the clerk's office and reorganizing the department listing in the charter. And there's kind of two ways of, I guess, two schools of thought about how to do that. You know, you can do it, you know, each election, we put something on the ballot and go through and change things. But then, you know, I think that it's worth sitting down and just doing it in whole because, you know, there's, for example, at the National League of Cities, they have a model charter that incorporates best practices. I know that when we had the last training session, there was some concern about whether the definition of what constituted a majority on council was clear. And it wasn't clear because if you look at, you know, I don't know, East Lansing or something, they actually make it clear in some of the other cities. So I think that if that's the kind of foundational document for how we run our city, it's worth making sure that it's up-to-date and reflective of how, you know, modern practice is for cities and kind of how the city of Albion is in the size and the scope of responsibilities that we have today. So, Councilmember Barnes?
I would like to ask our city attorney for legal opinion, if he would, on this situation.
What aspect of it?
As far as the charter, I always have you go through the charter when I have some intricate details needed. As our lawyer, do you feel that we should be taking this step?
Well, I mean, there's no, you know, I agree with the mayor in the sense that there are certainly areas of the charter that are complicated. I mean, there are things that probably should be changed. Whether or not you guys do a full-on charter review or just do charter amendments, that's a policy decision that you as a council make. I mean, there's pluses and minuses either way. If you do a full charter revision, you're gonna have a fresh charter. You know, you're kind of like the mayor just laid out. I mean, you're kind of starting with a whole new slate from a model thing. You know, the consultant's gonna cost thirty thousand dollars. There's gonna be, you're gonna have to pay your charter commission to continue to meet, to do things with the consultant, publication fees, things like that. The other route you can go is you can do charter amendments where you identify specific areas that need to be updated, as we did the last election. Actually, it wasn't the last election, it was before that, but we identified two key areas that needed to be addressed, and we addressed them. There's virtually no cost to the city in doing that. So I mean, are there things that should be changed yet? Which direction do you guys go, though? I mean, I can't point you either way because, like I said, that's a policy decision for you guys, but there are issues that need to be addressed in the charter that are problematic and somewhat contradictory. And I think we've held off doing the revision in the past because of the costs associated with it. I don't want to speak for previous council, but I think that was the motivation behind doing amendments rather than revision because it's far less expensive.
Therefore, I'm getting that information from you. Now I'm getting into the cost. Does anyone have an Excel spreadsheet above and beyond the thirty thousand is gonna get started because we're gonna be looking into more fees? We are over budget as a council in this capacity. Could we continue as we're doing in prior councils? We can address the issues as we approach them for a cost-saving factor with the budget coming up in November. Could we hold off until spring before we make this decision?
Well, I would say, I mean, you're gonna have to...
No.
You're gonna, you're gonna...
Have to write into the budget this year.
Yeah, it has to be in the budget this year.
Yeah, because, I mean, it, well, aside from that, I mean, to a certain, I mean, your, your charter revision is gonna take a, a significant period of time, it's not something that's gonna happen quickly, and you're gonna have to also time it with either a regular election or a special election. And my guess is, given the financial status of the city, you're probably gonna wanna time it with the general election because it's also cost prohibitive to hold a special election.
Yes.
For something like that.
That, that helps me even more, so therefore, we're still talking about a balloon, a ballooning price that's gonna keep rising as we get into this. And how do we know how much exactly to put in the budget aside for this? Because this is time sensitive. This could go, this could go out a lo- this could go out a long time before they finish that charter. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So is it my understanding that this work session is, is a way for us to discuss this all with a consultant to get a cost estimate, to get a timeline, to, to kind of ask questions so we can decide as a council how we wanna proceed? Am I understanding that?
Basically.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's no commitment, he, there's not a consultant being hired, this is a chance for him to talk to us because based on the MML, he's actually the foremost expert for that in the state, so.
Is he costing us to come to this meeting?
No.
Are you sure?
He's not charging, and in the email, he said he's willing to come down and talk to us about it, so.
Well, I can confirm if there's any travel expenses or anything associated.
Councilmember French, then councilmember Spicer.
So listening to the council over the last ten minutes, I have three and four in favor of proceeding in this manner.
We, we're not taking a vote really, somebody, there's no...
That's illegal.
Yeah, we're just, we're just asking for, this is really a scheduling discussion.
So, e- explain to me, maybe I'm just being stupid here, but explain to me how we can embark on a process without the approval of the council in advance. This was your idea and maybe some other people on council are, are on board. But this is us as a city moving in a direction that will, that could lead us to spending resources for the city without having a vote on whether or not this is an action that we should embark on at all. We've not had the philosophical conversation to discuss whether or not this is something we want to embark on, that's all I'm asking.
I, I guess the two, two responses that would be, one would be, then I'm gonna go to councilmember Spicer. One would be that we have to have some facts and numbers and an understanding of, of what it is before we can have that conversation. So I think that's, this is the, um, the way to, to have that. And then the, uh, the other thing is, uh, that, um, you know, we, it really is the, the basis for how we operate, and so I think that, um, it, it needs to be in line, like I said, the fact that it only, the last time it was done, it was about fifty-seven years ago. It's not something that happens often, and so I think it is important because I know other organizations, um, will, you know, regularly look at bylaws or those kinds of things, so I think it's, it's important to, to look at it, so. Especially, you know, considering that, actually, since I've been on council, we, we've, there've been times when we have made reference to the charter, um, for, you know, to look for things that are there or that are perceived to be that it might not be there. But this, it gives the chance for us to, um, and actually not us, because it'd be the charter commission and the voters to decide whether or not to, you know, approve different language, so. Councilmember Spicer and councilmember Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I, I just don't, I, I don't think we should get the hairs on our head standing up at this point. Because I, I believe this is just an, an initial, a first step in the process of considering if we wanna move forward with this. We could at the study session decide, yeah, that we don't wanna move forward. Once we have, um, more, um, information about the process, the costs associated with this, then I think at that time it would be a determining, we need to determine whether we wanna move forward. If this is not costing us a dime to have the study session, I don't see the harm in proceeding to the study session.
Councilmember Barnes.
So for clarity, this young man is gonna come in at a study session, give us his expertise, and it's not gonna cost us any money once she confirms it with her next correspondence with him. And we just get the information, and then after we get the information, we...
We could go from there.
Okay. Once we get the confirmation, we'll board, but right now, I'm not.
Okay. So what I, I guess what we need is just a date, so would, would Monday, the twenty-fifth work?
Twenty fifth. Please, on September twenty fifth?
Of September. Or the, so the twenty-fifth of September, Monday, or Thursday, the twenty-eighth of September? I think you got that backwards.
No, Monday, the twenty-fifth.
I'm on for the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we have two, you said twenty-fifth, you're right. So we have two for the twenty-fifth. Councilmember French.
Um, I think I can do either day.
Okay.
So...
I'll say the twenty-fifth. Is, is the twenty... Okay. Councilmember Reed Lawler.
With that, Rondez.
Okay. So right now, councilmember Barnes.
However, we, we are confirming right now, we will not meet until she gets back with us and confirm that he's gonna do it for free. We, we set a date, but we're not gonna meet if it's gonna cost us money. City manager said she would contact him and confirm that it is free.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So just, so as of right now, we have that for the twenty-fifth, and we'll just do a standard time at seven, so. Thank you all. Moving forward, city manager report.
Thank you. Well, Mayor and council, you may have noticed something different in the room. And I want to thank, um, Chief Scott Pipp and Public Safety, this is one of those acquisitions through the arrangement with the, um, the military. So we hope to be using it in a number of ways, um, as we move towards a higher technology usage within the city of Albion, who would have thunk it? And we're really excited about the Festival of the Forks, um, that will be, um, coming the weekend of September fourteenth. And again, in anticipation that if the Superior Street will not be completed in terms of the brickwork, they are planning on having the festivities in the Safer Plaza area and also utilizing Lloyd Park and Rieger Park, which, which will be where the carnival will be. And the car show will be that...
Friday?
Friday, fifteen. Okay.
In the parking lot.
Okay. L. Smith, who is the coordinator for that, is, is here. So, um, so we'll still have the car show, and we're looking forward to a really exciting event. Also, I wanted to mention to you that the Planning Commission, um, approved a referral to this board, which we have to draft a resolution, for a local historic district committee to explore the possibility of establishing historic districts within the city of Albion. So that will be coming before you, um, for the actual appointment and charge for the historic district advisory committee.
We have one already, right, we're talking about adding more?
I'm not aware of one that we have.
I thought our downtown was, which is why we gotta Brick Street.
Oh, the district, not the committee.
Well, this, this is a different, this, this is a, like a local, yeah, like a local historic committee, that's, that's a...
Right.
It might be a federally designated thing, this, this, this basically will allow us to locally designate something as a...
Right, so we're adding to our existing historic districts that we already have.
Possibly.
Possible. Cool.
And I want to thank you again, um, the employee appreciation picnic will be this Friday, starting at one. We appreciate everyone's participation and their contributions, and we're really looking forward to councilmember Lynn Reed's cookie. So that'll be one o'clock at Victory Park, and you're all welcome to join us here. I wanted to let you know that, um, our union negotiations have started, so we're in that process as well. And we did receive the initial, the vote from Blue Cross Blue Shield relative to the medical coverage, and that increase is five point five percent. Well, they did stay within the nine percent, which was essentially guaranteed, um, based on the contract that we entered into last year. Uh, let's see, what else? Um, councilmember Barnes had mentioned the HUD Choice Grant, and that was approached, we were approached by the MSU extension relative to, um, exploring the opportunity to do a revitalization grant, um, application to HUD. So what you have before you is a, um, a summary of the PowerPoint that they shared with us as well as some of the focal points relative to their grant application. They are, it's a one point three million dollar planning and action grant. It would be focused in precincts one, two, and three. Our initial con- conversation was looking at precinct one, but since it is also, um, relative to enhancing the areas within and around public housing, it made sense to include precincts two and three. So, um, one of our requests to you is to have a, a co- special council session so that we can approve a resolution because they're also asking for a ten thousand dollar grant match, should ten thousand. And they grant applications for one point three million.
Do it.
I think, oh, it's, oh, go ahead. For you.
On that one, I'm done.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think, I think, I talked to the manager about this, um, I'm in favor of having special meetings, I don't know, it probably has to be done this week almost because the deadline is next Monday, a week from today. But I think that, you know, councilmember Barnes is referencing that, there's some things for me that I, I wanna make sure that council has a chance to discuss about what, what we're being asked to approve and like what, you know, what, how, how, how the planning for that will, um, go forward because, uh, I wanna make sure that, um, we don't, we, we don't want to displace, I think that's the thing, we don't, we don't wanna displace people. And so I think that that's, uh, you know, a concern of mine, so, um, I guess even right now, is there a way? Is there a, a day this week that would be more favorable to, if we had to call a special meeting?
This week?
It'd have to, it'd have to be this week. I mean, unless it's, is it, the, the, the deadline is what, next Monday?
Yes.
When's the deadline, sorry?
Monday, the twenty-eighth.
To write a whole grant? Or is it a letter of intent?
It's the entire grant application is due on the twenty-eighth, they need the letter of commitment from the city, um, to go along with that grant application.
Okay, so someone's already written, okay.
And if I, if I could add, we very clearly stated, um, to the MSU extension representatives that under no circumstances were we interested in demolition of existing housing or the displacement of residents. So although the grant permits that, that is not going to be a part of our application.
What'd you say, Ms. Reed? I think Wednesday would work best for me, 'cause I know there's the, for each thing is tomorrow evening.
Yeah, tomorrow's the...
And then there's a...
The Resilient Communities Convention is on Thursday.
Yeah. So I think, would Wednesday at seven work for council?
When?
This Wednesday at seven?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, we have a chance to review that, um...
Well, I think that the manager just sent me out, if you could share, just, I guess there's a list of, uh, I guess permissible projects. And so if you could distribute that, that'd be helpful. You know, when I, when I read on the, when I read up on the grant, you know, it, it's, it seems worthwhile. You know, I, I'm not a, a big fan of last-minute requests for money, but I think, you know, relative to what we could receive, you know, it might be worth it, but I think the, like I said, the, my, my concern is just making sure that, um, like the manager's kind of assured us now that we're not, um, agreeing to something that we might not agree to, once it's actually implemented, so. Councilmember French.
So help me understand, if, if, I, I agree completely, we should never displace people, but could a plan be put in place where we say, convert, we build new places on the doubtful project?
Exactly.
For the purpose, and then once they are built and we move people over, then we can demolish the old one?
So I think, I think that, that was the concern that I had, 'cause when I, when I read the grant, went to HUD side and ran it, they basically had like three main categories, there was housing, there was kind of like a, um, an education component and a kind of, uh, a development in terms of just, um, quality of life development issues. The, the concern that I had when I read it is that the, the line under housing said, the only word was replace. Not necessarily, you know, renovate and develop additional, um...
Right, so, I'm sorry.
So I, so I think my, and this is kind of what we'll have the council, special council meeting to discuss, 'cause I don't wanna push this, but, I know, we're making good time, but, I, I think, um, I think the concern is if we could, I guess so far what I've seen in the grant, they've laid out a case for certain, um, improvements that need to be made for the current buildings. And I'm okay with securing funding to fix those, but what I, what I don't want to do is to, you know, if we say, okay, we're gonna fix that and then add additional, you know, mixed income housing, then that's fine. If we, if we do that and then the idea is to demolish or, or get rid of the other units, then that's something I'd be uncomfortable with. So, councilmember French and councilmember Barnes, or, yeah.
So, um, so the goal of this grant is to expand the number of housing units we have for low-income families, is that what I hear you saying?
It's, it's really, my understanding of it, it's, it's like a trans, I use that word, we use it a lot, transformative kind of grant, that going into a, a neighborhood or neighborhoods that might be identified as, um, distressed, that basically are either, um, what's the word? Not contingent, but they're, they're right, basically abutting, you know, either like public housing or, or other, um, like Tifa areas.
Mayor, if I could, and, and this is part of what's before you, um, it's, it reflects physical community development or economic development projects that enhance or accelerate the transformation of the neighborhood. And so that includes reclaiming and recycling vacant property into community gardens, park, pocket parks, farmer's market or land banking with maintenance, beautification, place-making, community arts projects, creative signage to enhance neighborhood branding, bureaus, sculptures, homeowner and business facade improvement programs, neighborhood broadband, Wi-Fi infrastructure and installation, fresh food init- initiatives, gap financing for economic development projects that are ready to implement. So although the grant offers the opportunity...
We're not asking.
That is not our ask.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Barnes.
Cutting through the, the red tape, it's really a grant that allows a higher standard of living, a higher quality of life. It was I who wanted the project torn down and rebuilt. My, my unit doesn't have a back door, it doesn't have a second exit, that means it's not decal, but it was grandfathered in. These homes are about eighty years old. Uh, we were looking at, from my spreadsheet was tearing down Crow School, build the new units there if we were seeking that grant. While we transition the people in my section over into there, we build new ones, transition them in, and with the available space, build new ones. Just like we were thinking, hey, we can go over and build more on Dirumpel site, as we did Crow. However, the further research showed in Chicago and in Detroit, they did tear these places down, but the people became displaced because they didn't replace the residents back in the same situation, so we're not at that level yet, so that's why it was turned down, and I agree with them for turning it down. Right now, we're looking for the, the shelters for the kids in the winter, new security systems and cameras throughout the, uh, property because we don't, uh, and a playground. So we're taking the small step in this first, as we do more research. We do believe in the next five years, because this has been opened up, the capitalism and entrepreneurs and investors, they can come in at a certain amount of years and start purchasing these properties also. And that's where we felt the gentrification or the displacement of people coming in, as the investors capture... the investors capture the property, take the rent up, and it, because it's legally through Congress, not public housing again. So we want to take this really slow. That's what's going on.
Thank you, council.
So, yeah, so I think we're set for this Wednesday at 7:00 PM for a special council meeting and we can kind of hash it out, so.
We have the grant writer too, right? It's not just going to be some of us talking?
I can ask if they can come.
That'd be very helpful. Yeah, it's a good idea.
And Mayor
Councilmember Spicer.
You will be sharing with us the information that
Yeah, I, the manager will forward that to the rest of the council.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, we just hijacked the manager's board.
And then the final item, it was mentioned in regards to the Cass Street construction, which is not related to the Superior Street construction. And if you recall, when we approved the award of the contract, I was in partnership with Albion College, and they were doing essentially Cass Street up to the railroad track, and the city was doing the remaining portion of that. As a result of that, we, we had received a request from the college if we could assist them with a small project, which was to fill some of the potholes in some of their parking lots because school was about to start. And they did pay us for the asphalt, which was about $2,000, so they paid us for the materials. But I just wanted to disclose to you that we did have that cooperative agreement.
That's it.
That was it.
Okay. Uh, future agenda items, Councilmembers Barnes, French.
I would like to add for the next agenda item, the black footprint in Albion. I have four bullet, four, four bullet points that I'd like to be addressed, or I might as well give them to you now. 600 block of Austin Avenue, which is a business district, the Albion Housing Commission, which is a public subsidized residency, Double Vision, which concerned youth development, the Malibu Iron Site, which really is about creating jobs and employment. And using the term the black footprint in Albion, this is in no way, shape, or form to be anti anything or promoting anything. Detroit has Greek town, Chicago has Jew town, Grand Rapids has ethnic festivals, and all of these cities has a footprint of some type of ethnic diversity and background. And I'm, right now, I feel that Albion should have a black footprint also, so I wanted to bring this up as an agenda item.
For a discussion?
Yes, discussion, just a discussion.
Councilmember French.
Um, council rule?
We had to, we're going to make that fit. I'll talk to you afterwards, we're going to have to make that fit, okay. Oh, sorry, turn your ass.
Update on nuisance property litigation.
On Eden, hopefully.
Uh, multiple different sites.
Okay. And the, and the Google thing, the G suite?
Yes.
The Google G suite email, Google Docs. Are there any other future agenda items in council?
Mayor, I could ask for a clarification on Councilmember Barnes' black footprint. What is it that you're asking of me as city manager to do?
Nothing, just a, just, just a discussion, you know, other, I don't want to get, just a discussion about where we fit in in the sustainability of Albion, where's our growth, where's, I mean, what are we doing to help promote, you know, this identity, this sustainability?
Okay, so you want a discussion?
That's all, I mean, we got, we got a business district, we got a housing complex, we got a youth center over here, we got the Malibu Iron Site, and, you know, I just want to talk about, hey, you know, what about us? That's all I'm saying, what about us? Y'all might not understand right now, please bear with me, other cities got it.
Uh.
One half, sorry. One last one, in case you haven't received your copy of the yellow pages for Albion, it has a beautiful picture that was taken by our own artist resident Stacy Levin. And she will sign your cover if you would like.
What do we get?
You didn't get one yet?
Okay. Okay, uh, we've, that's all future agenda items, everyone's here. Public comments, persons addressing city council should limit their, well, it's not limited actually, just public comment, we ask that you remain within the three minute speaking period and observe proper decorum. Are there any general public comment this evening? Please come forward and state your, your name and address. Yeah, Mr. Dunklin. Wow.
Hello, my name's John Dunklin, I stay at 1203 Second Street. I hate to sound like a break, broken record, but I'm back again about some of the same things that I spoke about. I'm trying to see if Albion's going to give some type of resolution or even comment on these issues, because right now, I feel like you're throwing bricks under Councilman Barr or you're flattening his tires that he can't do nothing. So I'm here today to say that my family has owned this house for three generations, there's been three generations of people in here, Wild, Carson, Hartwell, First, Second, Third. All the grass in the street is above the curb, there's a grass ordinance of 10 inches, it's at least 12 inches, the curb is 10, the grass in the street is 12. I'd like to know who owns Albion Junior High, is it up the code and is it zoned for what And I have pictures on my phone that show all these streets that I talk about, that they're out of code. But the question is, I want to know if anybody would like to speak on them today.
Councilmember Barnes.
Were you mentioning Washington Gardner?
Yes, I did. I'd like to know who owns it?
Albion College.
Is it up the code and what is it being used for?
It's currently being used as an athletic workout area for college students, locker rooms are used.
Is it zoned for that?
Yeah, there's not a separate zoning for, not a separate
Well, it used to be a school.
Right.
Okay, it was zoned for schooling, it's no longer a school.
You don't have a school zoning district. We have a college district.
John, right here.
Well, he's not saying anything.
Yeah, I think the, the, the practice for councils for us not to respond to public comments, so then once we hear, then we can address, so I think that's
Well, a month ago, I addressed the same thing. You still haven't addressed me or had comments on First, Second, Hartwell, no handicap access, no sidewalks, the gutters don't work, they're not even attached, so you had plenty of time to address this for this meeting. So it sounds like you're flattening my tires again, not to address me again. And I'm going to show you some pictures that, I know that you drive down this block at least two or three times a week because you see what's going on. So you should be able to address this because you go down those streets because I see you.
Yeah, I drive, I'll run town, and I think that's the, that's the, the concern about, yeah, no, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm going to stop, but, yes.
Yes, what?
I understand, I understand, but
But I want you to understand, I want some clarification, like you guys want. When I get a nuisance abatement, when I got the cleanest yard, how do I get a nuisance abatement and you can't get one? You on the council can't get one, nobody in the council can get one, but I seem to find to get one. But then, when you should give yourself an abatement, you won't. That's not fair to the people who pay taxes. Y'all want us to pay our taxes, but you won't fix our sidewalks? You won't do nothing. So how do you think people like me feel? I bet you can walk down your sidewalk, I bet you can walk down yours. Why does Albion put a bag on a fire hydrant? I bet you they wouldn't do that by the college. So why is they doing it over here by my house? It's against the law. If there's a fire, what do you do? Go down the street and get some water? Why the house burn? This is ridiculous, Mayor. You need to comment on this, city manager, somebody. You're out of code, but you hold the people to be in code. That's not fair to the people who pay you. We pay all of you, and what are you doing for us? It's being done downtown, it's being done by the college, it's being done everywhere. You see sidewalks, they're talking about curbs, they're talking about gutters, nothing's been done in my area in 40 years. But you're still telling me to hang on. What, do I give the house to my grandson and he's seven? Then it'd be four decades. So is there a comment? You made comment on college streets, corners, driveways, stop signs, lighting, I've been complaining for 14 years. We can't even get a handicap access. It's not right, Mayor. We elect all of you guys in, we can elect all of you guys out. So it should be some comment on this, it shouldn't be total silence. And once again, I ask for comment for anybody here. Is there any comment on this situation, seeing that I talked about it a month and a week ago? Is there any comment, Mayor?
Ms. Mitchell, would there be
Councilmember Reed.
I'm talking to the show, I'm not talking
Oh, yeah, no, I was just, no, yeah.
Okay. Would there be any way that you could, could get the necessary people together who handles the problems that Mr. Duncan is talking about? And have them sit down and go over it, discuss it, and see what can be done and what can't be done? So at least he'll know what the city can do and cannot do?
What I can do is put on your next agenda a response to the concerns that we heard expressed at the meeting. Allow staff time to investigate the concerns, see what the recommendation would be.
Councilmember Law or Councilmember Spicer?
Dr. Mitchell, is there any way that you can find out if there is any complaints in the fourth precinct that Mr. Dunklin is concerned about? And let me know, please.
Any other complaints or is, if, if there is any in fourth precinct?
Because he said if, there is a couple, so I'm wondering is there any in my precinct that needs to be addressed? And if, if, if there is, can you just let, let us know?
Okay.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, I think that the concerns that Mr. Dunklin has raised or is raising has to deal with code. And if that is simply code, the matters are simply code associated, I would think that Mr. Tracy, who was director of code enforcement, and Dr. Mitchell with Mr. Dunklin could simply get together to determine, you know, what, what's the deal, what can be done and what cannot? It seems like it's that simple to me, I mean, or, or am I missing something?
I, I think, I think the difference here is, we, we, we have a code that requires, I guess, a number of things, but like, for example, residential properties, how that's, how they're supposed to be maintained, okay? So if, if someone is not maintaining their property a certain way, the city can enforce ordinances against them and say, hey, you have to bring this up to what's acceptable for residential property. And what I hear Mr. Dunklin saying is that for, for city infrastructure, which is slightly different, which is streets, sidewalks, water mains, those kinds of things, yeah, we're, that there are inadequacies or, or ways in which those need to be improved. Though, though, those are not the same thing, right? The code is not necessarily the fact that there's potholes in the street. Now, if, if, if a street has not been repaved in decades, let's say that's the case, then that is something of concern.
This is what I, what I'm thinking is, if Mr. Leonardson, Mrs. Mitchell, John, Tracy, get together, Mr. Tracy, get, all of them get together and, and go take a look at exactly what needs to be done. Something should be able, if, if it can't be done this turnaround because most of, of this year's spending has already been set, then maybe next year's.
And that's, and that's the next thing I was going to say is that because when we, when we collect taxes, we collect taxes in, but we don't collect enough taxes to do every single project. Like, you know, if we, if we had the money, I would redo every sidewalk, redo every street and have it on a cycle where we were constantly doing that. So every year, we have to make a decision about streets, which ones local streets, because for example, with like Superior, we're contributing to that, we're contributing to that, but that's primarily like a state funded project. First, Second, Third, Wild, Hartwell, Chauncey, all those streets are local, those are our responsibility. So I think, I think the immediate thing that comes to mind would be to say, like Councilmember Reed said, the next time we're asked for street projects, to give a, a really close look at those streets, to see what we can do. Because in the, what we've done, since I've been on council, I know since Councilmember Reed and French and Barnes have been on council, we have kind of gone, alternated through the precincts. And I think the last precinct we were in was Five, I believe, right? Because we did Ford and
Six.
Huh?
Then Six.
It was Six, okay. So I think that, that, that's the immediate thing the city can do that, that, that is within our power, is to look at that and consider those when it comes back around for deciding that. The other thing is just kind of deciding where we can find resources to, to really deal with that because, and, 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 and I don't know, maybe, maybe this, the grant that we're going to talk about Wednesday could be used to help with that because I know, you're right, you know, you know, the ADA is, is very important in compliance with that, you know, so I, I, I wouldn't oppose what Ms. Reed was saying and sit down and kind of look at that if you're willing to do it.
I'm willing to look at it, but I want it to move forward. I don't want it to be stagnant, it's been so stagnant that it's ridiculous. No street in town should be as bad, some of our gutters aren't even connected, when it rains, it's like Lake Michigan, okay? The truck that even comes to suck this out, they know about these drains, they don't even come to suck it out and they know about it. See, this is ridiculous, if people don't want to do their job, get somebody that does. That's the simple fact of the whole situation, people don't work hard anymore. And maybe they should, they might get more out of life.
Councilmember Barnes, and then, and then I'm going to have to.
Well, the, the larger situations where council has to take a vote on the street thing, I've explained that to John, he gets that, he understands that. The day when he came by my home, he, he has the camera with him now, he's talking about some of the elementary things as far as the grass in the street is
Higher than the grass in the yard.
I mean, if you, if you drive down our streets, you can see the gra, how the grass grows inside, on the sides and it
The seam or the
It's no pavement.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
It's 10 foot potholes, I've measured them.
10 inches for
No.
10 feet.
I speak of a tape measure that I know how to use, it's 10 foot and it's four inches deep. You go on First Street and Third.
Hold on, please, just hold on. The elementary things we're talking about is where the curb meets the pavement, the road and the roadway. If you go straight down, grass is, it's grown up so high that, when he showed me on the camera, I thought it was just an easy fix, city workers come in and just scrape it out. It's, it's just that, that simple. If the street sweeper was coming, it wouldn't, it wouldn't grow, so it's a maintenance issue. He's not talking about the major products right now, but they are there for him, but when he went out and cleaned the streets up himself, he was, they gave you a citation, right?
They still give me one if they want to.
Citation for cleaning the street, told him it was against the law for a citizen cleaning the street. So that's when he came down and did and showed me those, the videos.
Okay.
Some of those maintenance issues and plus, Mr. Dunklin and Mr. Tracy have a history, and the history is where thus far, they haven't come to a meeting of the minds where they can sit at the table half an hour and agree to not to disagree, so there would have to be someone else in that room with them. So, we're trying.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Barnes, and I went over with John too and, and took a look, you know, I see what he's talking about.
What about handicap people? What about people with wheelchairs? What about pe-
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it shows. Have a nice day.
Yeah. Okay, are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, are there any other, uh, public comments this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, Wayne Arnold, nine oh six Hall Street. Um, Mayor, if you may recall, um, on the July twenty-second, uh, Listening Project, I brought to your attention that, uh, I had some concerns about the, uh, the, uh, the way the, uh, re- review board was, uh, conducting business. And so, since I spoke to you, I'm, um, I'm even more concerned now that, uh, uh, things probably haven't been going the way it should have. I'll give you an example. Um, in March, uh, the board approved the gentleman. He, uh, was over it, the, uh, his income was over, and he did not qualify for the disability portion of it. But, uh, I guess, uh, one of the, uh, board members thought, I don't know what made him think that, but he thought that this guy, for some apparent reason, needed a break on his taxes, I say, okay. But, but, but since then, this, this past July, uh, after I looked into it further, another individual, same circumstances, over the, they're over the, uh, limit on income, they're not a disabled veteran. So, they were denied. So, if you got a person on the board making a statement like, um, when it comes down to property taxes, we, as the board reviewers like that, then what I'm thinking is, is that this probably then became the norm on this committee, because here's the thing. Now, I just noticed it this year, but I don't know how long this has been going on, but it seemed to me that they were providing breaks when, you know? And I think this definitely breeds bias, and, and one of, uh, one lady, I won't mention by name, she got several properties, she even thought that the board was racist, and I said, no, I don't think that's true. But after I talked to her, I mean, after she made that statement, and after I seen the way the board was conducted later on that evening, I'm not sure if she ain't telling the truth, actually. So, what I'm do- what I'm trying to find out is, how do we, how do the council or my councilperson or whatever go about, uh, setting up a public hearing so these, so, uh, maybe the board review can address some of these issues? Cause, uh, there's no doubt in my mind that it was done, and, uh, so, where do we go with this? I think that, uh, the integrity of the board is definitely at stake, because if they, if they're approving their relatives, or if they're approving their friends, and they're not following the guidelines, you're definitely, you're definitely opening up a environment for bias and poss- and possibly racism, so. Uh, uh, could somebody maybe let me know, what's the procedure for getting a hearing on this? And if it's anybody else that has some concerns with the, uh, board review, they can come and address their concerns? If somebody could enlighten me on that, or what's the, uh, procedure for going about doing something like this? Because the reason I'm bringing this up, because in order for them to even appeal to the tax, uh, tribunal, you know, they got to bring it in, in front of the board, they got to, uh, have the board review address these concerns. So, as far as I was able to detect, is, is definitely some favoritism, if nothing else. I won't go as far as to call nobody, I won't go as to far as to say racist, but at best, it's probably some bias there, so. I think this is something that's really serious, and the integrity of the board is definitely at stake, and this should be something that should be addressed immediately. And, and we can't have, if these people was conducting themselves like that, we can't have them sitting on the board, you know, if they're doing stuff like this. So, I think it should be looked into, and, uh, and maybe get some of these concerns addressed. And if it's any other citizens that got a problem in the past, or in the, or currently, then maybe, they may have concerns that they would like to address. But, uh, uh, as far as I'm concerned, let's just say, uh, the integrity of the board is at stake as far as I'm concerned. So, if, if someone could address this and see if a hearing could be scheduled, or how do we go about getting a hearing?
So, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and what, what we can do, similar to what we just talked about with Mr. Dunklin. We can set up a time, you can meet with me and the city manager, and then we can kind of discuss, um, what you're saying, so we can got, you know, um, let's meet, so, so that we can.
Oh, yeah, so you, yeah, definitely, uh, it's definitely, we can do that, yeah, so let's do that.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there any others, is there any other public comment this evening? Yes.
Real quick, Jay Loomis, four oh eight West Ash Street, Wednesday at seven o'clock, is that on camera?
That will be, that's the.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, uh, we will, uh, I guess there's, okay, so we're going to have to go to closed session, so we're going to, uh, just take a kind of a momentary adjournment, we'll re-adjourn and open the closed session, but we need to approve the closed session. So, um, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Okay. Is a, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all, do the roll call, we're gonna voice over. We'll do a voiceover, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will reconvene in, the mayor's off.